Okay, thank you. Well, good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. I'm going to go ahead and convene the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM. We have two items on the agenda. Well, we have one item on the agenda with two parts, the 2020 Benefits and Liability Insurance Review. We have a benefits presentation and an insurance review.
Yes.
And let's see.
Council President?
Yes, please.
May I do the introduction of the first speaker, please?
Would you? Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, council members. Council President Corman, it is my honor to present Wendy Ritterizer, our HR Benefits Manager. She's worked for the city for almost four years now, and she has really put Renton on the map with regard to benefits in our deferred comp program. I'm excited to have you hear her presentation tonight. Wendy?
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen here, make sure that this works. So if anybody has questions as we go along, please just feel free to jump right in. We can just make this as interactive as you like. I have presented to the council each year, so I just want to check and make sure you can see, you're able to see my screen with the presentation?
Oh, yes.
Great. So this is an annual presentation, so many of the council members will be familiar with the material. And first, I'm going to talk about our employee benefits, and that falls into two areas where the city is self-funded. And one is our retirement savings plan that we'll talk about first, and then our health plan. And so with our retirement savings plan, we offer a deferred comp plan that falls under Tax Code 457B, and that's in addition to the pension plan that you're probably all familiar with, the PERS Plan that the state operates. Our plan is a multi-employer plan. We have joint governance with the RFA. It was originally a plan that covered both entities, and when the two organizations separated, it made sense to keep one plan for economies of scale. We get better rates based on that. So our governance structure, there are four voting members, the city's CAO and the Renton Regional Fire Authority's fire chief, and then two administrators. And this is in our bylaws. And the committee operates very transparently and welcomes involvement of all employees. We have regular attendance by both the unions and non-represented staff, and we publish all of our material in advance and keep everything on SharePoint. We do have a very engaged population. And the committee are fiduciaries, which means that they're legally bound to act in the best interest of the plan participants. Their primary goals are to keep the rates and expenses low and to offer good investment options and to provide participant education. So we work with our vendors who are co-fiduciaries on the plan and follow investment policy statement and operating guidelines that were adopted by the committee and have been given previously to the council. The fees and expenses that we keep for this plan are very low compared to industry standards. That's important because the fees and expenses are paid by the participants out of their accounts, but the committee is the one who negotiates those fees. And so as you can see, we do keep our expenses that our participants pay low compared to the national benchmark averages. And the committee regularly reviews the performance of the funds. We offer a wide range of funds with various risk and reward return characteristics. So the majority of our employees prospectively are putting their funds into multi-asset or target date funds. If you're familiar with that, and those are funds where the participant doesn't have to go in and select individual investment categories. They simply go into a fund that is appropriate for their age, if you will. So they say typically the year they would be eligible for full retirement, so 2030, 2035, 2040, et cetera. There are funds for each of those five-year increments. And then Vanguard manages the investments to appropriate risk strategy based on that age and reduces the risk as the individual gets closer to retirement. So that's very popular and common in retirement plans and something that, as you'll see on a future slide here, more of our employees are putting money into. Also, for those who want to make their own mix, we offer core funds in a variety of investment options. And then for those who are very savvy investors and really just want to do it themselves, we have a brokerage window so they can invest completely outside of the plan. Now, this shows where we, the money that is going in. The total assets, we have just under $130 million, and you can see where those are invested, the multi-asset fixed income and then the largest portion in stocks. But prospectively, we've had $7 million go in this past year, and prospectively, as you can see here in the purple, more people are putting money into the multi-asset, those target date funds. That's becoming an increasingly popular option among participants. We work with, our investment record keeper is TIAA, and we work with TIA to provide participant education, both targeted mailings and then also in-person meetings. So our participants get information, different information for somebody who's just hired and might be in their late twenties or early thirties compared to somebody who might be nearing retirement. So the information is targeted. Also, someone who is invested in a way that might not be considered a traditional approach for their age, too conservative, too aggressive, will also get some targeted communication. So those things have worked really well. And that is my summary of our deferred compensation plan. Do you have any questions?
Does council have any questions at this time? I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and talk about the health plan. So the city is self-insured on our medical dental and vision plan. So we do offer a fully insured plan where participants can buy insurance through Kaiser, but very few of our employees do that. Most elect to go into the city's plan. And the risk or reward of that rests with both our employees and the city. So if the city, if the plan is well-managed and our employees are good consumers of those healthcare dollars, it saves us money. The city being the sponsor is, again, a plan fiduciary, so we're required to operate in the best interest of those participants and be good fiduciaries of the plan and those dollars. We have a Renton Employee Health Plan Board that makes the decision. There are just three voting members, our city's CAO, and the two union presidents are the three voting members. And then there's a cost share between the city and the employees. And that cost share is negotiated through a collective bargaining agreement that is approved by the council. So the cost share, the 91%, 9%, which is what is currently approved, is negotiated in the bargaining unit agreement. And then the rates or the premiums are set each year based on actuarial projections of what the costs will be for the coming year. Now, we are self-insured, but we do have stop-loss, and stop-loss is really kind of like a very high deductible plan. So the city budget covers all of the expenses for people's medical care unless an individual goes over $250,000 in a year, and then our stop-loss insurance picks that up. So we are protected against really catastrophic costs. We also offer some fully insured plans, and that's life insurance, disability insurance, and an employee assistance program. Oops, I think I clicked that. And also a flexible spending account where people could put money away on a pre-tax basis to cover some expenses. Our vendor fees, so we contract with HMA is our third-party administrator that actually processes, approves, and pays the claims. And council approves these contracts each year at our renewal towards the end of the calendar year. We did a 2.5% increase in our HMA, which is the administrator for our self-insured, and then you can see the premium increases for each of the other plans. Then the premiums that our employees pay, so that's what we're paying our vendors to administer the plan. And then the money that we're setting aside in the healthcare fund in order to pay all of those healthcare expenses, that again is the cost share between the employees and the city. And the medical plan increase was 3.7% this year. Our stop-loss premiums had a considerable increase into the expenses. Dental plans dropped and vision plan increased. So that was, we used to combine those dental and vision into one, and we decided to separate those out because when someone leaves employment and they want to go on COBRA, they can buy just one or the other. So we had our actuary separate that. Life insurance didn't change, and then you can see a small change in the employee assistance program and then no change in flex. These next two slides, I think, are really interesting visual. This shows all of the expenses. You can see we stack them on top of each other to get the total expenses for the year. City programs, that's the cost of administering, so the benefit staff salary and benefits. So you can see that our cost, our total expenses for our medical plan, we hear in the media all the time about how the costs of medical plans are going up so dramatically, and at the city, they're just not. You can see that we did have from 2017 to 2018, we had an 8% increase, and then next year, we had a 5.6% decrease, and then a 2.7% increase. So you can see that we've really maintained, if you go all the way back to 2014, we're practically flat over those years with just small increases and decreases over time. So the city has actually done a really good job keeping healthcare costs down. I really have to credit, in part, it's the board and the administration of the plan, but it's also the communication and partnering with our unions. The unions do a really good job of talking to the members about the importance of being very good consumers of the healthcare spend, making good choices, and I think that's part of our success. And then we do have a good wellness program as well, so those things are very important. Now, that's how much money the plan is costing, the spend. The next slide is about the reserves. This is a little bit complicated, but basically it shows how much the reserves are in the plan. So we have to set aside money to pay expenses, and the state requires that we have at least 30% of the projected costs for the upcoming year held in reserve. That's the minimum. And so we don't want to be just at the minimum because then if expenses are higher than expected, we would drop below that. So our, the board's target is to range between 30 and 40. So you can see what our reserves have been historically. And the reason why this line jumps up each year is because the actuary projects an increase in our costs, and so therefore we have to have an increase in reserves. You can see that reserves started building, and we're getting significantly above what is necessary. And so what the board proposed was to have a rate holiday or a premium holiday. So neither the city nor the employees put any money into premiums for a full month. It saved the city almost $1 million. I think it was $960,000-some thousand during a time of COVID when the budget was very tight. And employees also didn't contribute to the plan. And so you can see it really drew down our reserves, but it didn't put us in a dangerous territory. So that was one of the cost-saving measures that worked out pretty well for us. And now you can see the range here, and this is the future. It takes us a little while to get each month closed and posted because we have to wait for the claims to run out. So you can see that if the expenses run exactly at projected, this is where we'll be. If they run above projected, then the reserves will drop down below that line, and if they run below projected, they'll climb above. I hope that makes sense. I think this is a good visual to see where we're at. And then for those of you who prefer to see it just in numbers, you can see what our beginning reserves were and what our minimum and our reserve balance, and then the money that went in, the money that went out, the money we were reimbursed by stop-loss because somebody went or a few people went over the amount, and then what ended up being our reserves at the end and the change in reserve balance. So that's just kind of a high-level picture of the health plan and how that's doing. Do you have any questions?
I'll start out with just a comment, a really good presentation and great work just overseeing those funds, and it looks really good. It's great to see that the medical is not climbing that fast. I love hearing about how everybody's working together to manage that. So thank you so much for that. With that, I'd like to see if council has any questions or comments. I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so are we, I think we're ready to move to the second part?
Great. So next I turn to...
There is a question now from Kim Todd has a question.
Yeah, not so much of a question, just wanted to say I appreciate the fact that you were differentiating and actually separating the vision and the dental part, right? So kind of just giving more options as far as when it comes to the COBRA. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I just, kind of one last thing. Our employees very much value the health plan. It's something that they do not take for granted. It's a really quality health plan with fairly low point-of-service fees, so the copays and deductibles and amounts that people have to pay are very competitive, and people know that, and we talk about it a lot and promote it, and I think it's very much appreciated. And so it's money well spent. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelsey. Kelsey is our risk manager, and she's been with the city for a little over three years, and I'll turn it over to Kelsey.
Okay, thanks, Wendy.
Yes, thank you, Wendy. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And we do have a bit of content here, so I am going to just jump right in and get going. Let's see, let me move that. All right, okay, so I'll be taking us through the 2020 review of our insurance fund, the 502 insurance fund. And I want to start off with setting the stage here with the big picture. The expenditures in the 502 account are about $3 million each year. And those come from three big buckets or categories of cost of spending as well as replenishment of funds through subrogation on line four. So both in and out of the insurance fund, unfortunately mainly out. The biggest category here of costs are one and two, the first being claim losses for all of our workers' compensation, unemployment, liability claims, as well as some of the property damages that the city suffers. Those come out of the 502 fund. Insurance premiums for both of our excess insurance as well as straight insurance are from the 502 fund, and then the administrative expenses in order to run those programs. So I'm going to take us through those four categories. So for losses and claims, we do have limitations to how much we spend from this account and losses and claims from the account. And you see that here with our self-insured retentions as well as our deductibles for the various lines of coverage. So starting off with the workers' compensation piece, we have excess insurance that begins at half a million dollars. So below that per claim, we cover those losses. It's administered by a third-party administrator, Everly Vivian, and the benefits team is the main, the main host and manager of workers' compensation, and it is an employer-paid benefit. And here we're looking at what we're talking about for numbers. So for 2020, we had fewer claims, we had 32 total claims, and the cost was about $440,000. One thing I want to point out here is the large decrease between 2015 and halfway through the year of 2016. And this is where the Renton Regional Fire Authority, the RRFA, did split off and become its own entity. So as one would expect, workers' compensation very much decreased, both in the quantity of claims received as well as the cost. For unemployment, this is also an employer-paid benefit, and it's managed by the labor division within HR. For 2020, we did have more claims. We also had a higher cost of claim with a total of 99 claims and about $142,000. And 2/3 of those claims were separations for supplemental employees related to the pandemic. For property losses that come out of the 502 fund, we, losses that we see are within our deductible for $50,000 and below, and that's per occurrence. That is managed by risk management. This slide gives us a little idea of when we're talking about these property losses, we have the value of insured property for the city is over $334.5 million. So we're talking a lot of value with our property, and some of the losses that the city experiences are covered by the 502, and not all of them are. I won't go into too much detail about that, but last year, we did see a decrease, and $35,636 was the cost to rent in property losses. Liability is another, a large category of claims and losses for the city within our self-insured retention, which is a quarter of a million dollars. And below, per occurrence, we manage those claims and losses from the 502. It's managed by the Risk Management Division. And we see a variety of liability claims that come in. The most common are property damage. In particular, automobile accidents cause a lot of damage and cause claims, and bodily injury as well, we see those. We see fewer of the civil rights violations, and they will, they are typically high visibility when we do receive those. And I want to mention that our partnership with the city attorney's office is absolutely vital in us handling all of these, each of these. This graph gives us an understanding of how many claims we see per year. Last year in 2020, we had far fewer claims come in, just 37. It actually was so much fewer that it, the 10-year average was previously 70 claims per year, and it's now 65 claims per year. This is broken down by division and then by department. And again, this is number of claims. And so this, this graph does show, is pretty indicative year over year. Mainly Public Works will take up the majority of the number of claims that we receive and police shortly thereafter behind. It does not mean that we're liable for each of the claims that we receive. We settle about 30% to 40% each year, which is a relatively good indication of our liability level. And again, the majority of claims that we see are from automobile accidents. So those are the numbers of claims. What does that, how does that translate to dollars? 2020, it was about $118,000. And you'll notice some of these years that have high settlement amounts had large settlements, so had one large event such as a water main break in 2015 and a police settlement in 2012. And so now I'll take us into the second category of expenditures out of the 502 account, which is a big chunk of the costs and expenditures for this account, and it's our insurance premiums. You'll see here our lines of coverage, which spans the board to make sure that we have our assets protected for the city. And property being a big piece of that, the 2020 property insurance premium costs for last year were over half a million dollars, and that was up from, it was almost a 29% increase from the year before. And this, I really want to point out, is a product of the insurance market itself. So we had been experiencing some really great premiums and lines of coverage for about seven years prior to 2019. And then just due to unfortunate events such as windstorms like Harvey and Irma and Florence and Michael, the severity and frequency in general of wildfires, flooding events, storms, we're just seeing the insurance market really take a hit, and they're translating that to their customers. And so the hardening of the market is not something, the city itself, I want to point out, didn't have large losses, and so we actually do benefit from that. And still, the hardening of the market is what we're seeing for these increases and the driver of that. And we are currently, I will be presenting to you for approval for our premium for our July 1 renewal, and we are expecting about a 30% increase. Unfortunately, that story applies similarly to the liability side for premiums. We have seen a steady increase. Last year, it was over 10% increase for 2020, the premiums for just the commercial general liability, $328,000 approximately. One thing I want to point out on this page here is the decrease between 2015 and 2016. You'll notice almost $200,000 difference, and this is due to us splitting and departing from Washington City's insurance authority risk pool. And it is, really, we had, as part of the risk pool, Renton had, did not have large losses, and some of those entities that were insured through the risk pool did. So in essence, we were subsidizing their losses. And so that's where you really see this decrease of $200,000 when we went into our own fully self-insured program. And that being said, we are still seeing the hardening of the market on the liability side as well as the property side for insurance, and that's due to larger and larger settlements and verdicts coming out of jury trials. And so when you look at our liability grouping of insurance, which does include the stop-loss insurance that Wendy presented on, our public officials, our airport insurance, cyber insurance, law enforcement insurance, that whole host of liability groupings together increased by 22% in 2021 and just this last January, and then for 2020, it had increased 15%. And I really want to point out here that, again, it's not because Renton has had losses, it's really driven by the market itself. And when we look at and compare ourselves to our neighbors close by even, right next door, they're having trouble getting lines of coverage, and the lines of coverage they're able to get are costly. So although we do look at this and kind of gulp and say 22% is challenging, we are doing, relative to others, we are, we're doing okay. The third category of costs coming out of the 502 is administrative expenses to run the programs. We do have a broker that purchases our insurance for us, and that's Alliant. We also have a third-party administrator, Carl Warren Company, that does our claims management. They handle about 15% of claims, and we're able to save some costs by handling 85% in 2020 of our claims in-house. Litigation costs for defense do come out of the 502 as well. In 2020, we did resolve five cases, and then currently, we have through 2020, four others remain open. And then another expense that is... And then another expense that is a worthwhile expense is our proactive approach to safety and taking care of our employees, which really does pay dividends. It's been shown to have a one-to-three return on investment where we invest, with investments in food and safety programs. And then finally, the fourth category, these are funds that we bring back into the 502 account. And roughly, so for third parties that cause loss, property damage to city property, we're able to subrogate and recover some of those costs. Each year it's approximately $100,000. And last year was right along those lines with just under $100,000. And so on my last two slides, just a little bit of additional information. I want to reiterate to council that the decision to go fully self-insured and depart from Washington City's insurance authority risk pool has benefited the city. It saved a lot of money, estimating over, well over a million dollars in savings at this point in the five years. It has, again, we, the partnership with the city attorney's office has been fundamental to those savings and the successes as well as in-house programs like safety and appropriate mitigation of the risk exposures to keep costs low. And then lastly, touching on a couple ongoing concerns that we work through in risk management to make sure that we're mitigating and reducing our exposures, a new category of liability coming up with COVID-19. I'm confident that, and I'm proud that I believe our city has really taken care of our employees and put them at the center of decisions that we've made as well as compliance with the law and regulation. And has, which has ultimately, I believe minimized any potential exposure to risk and liability for COVID-19. And we continue to take care of our employees. The aging subsurface infrastructure is and has been a concern as we see water main breaks, breaking. Water mains unfortunately deteriorating and, and giving up after some of them being 100 years old under our, our streets. And I know that that very much is a focus of our Public Works team and administrator. Police liability is always a, a risk area. It's a high-risk job. And we see that currently as well. Joint and self-reliability in Washington State having the potential to pay 100% of a claim if we're found to be 1% liable if the other party is underinsured or uninsured and unable to pay. And then public records violation is the last category of, of exposures that we have as a public entity. And our credit to our city clerk, who, city clerk and his team, who really make sure that we minimize our, our liability in this case. With that, what questions may I answer?
Well, it's a fine presentation. Kelsey, thank you very much. And before I take questions, I just do want to add another comment. So thank you for, for managing this. And I want to say that I, I appreciate your statement very much about the city clerk managing the public records. But I also want to extend that to all of the employees for helping manage the liability. And you know, it's, it's everybody really focusing on their, their tasks and, and doing them in ways that are safe and protecting the safety of the public. And those really are impressive numbers. I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed that the liability is down at that level. And I also commend you for the, the decisions about the insurance, you know, the excess insurance fund and how we were saving on the, not, not being part of the pool anymore. So well done. I bet other council members have some comments or questions. So I'd like to see what, what they have to say.
Yes, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Rick. You're absolutely right about it being a team effort. Absolutely. All employees are vital in, in each of those categories.
Any questions from council? Okay, I, I'm not seeing any, so. Sure, I'm not missing. Speak up if, in case I'm missing your, your hand, if anybody has anything. Okay, well, great job. I, I appreciate it. Those are good management. It's nice to, to see those issues going so well. And I think with that, I'll go ahead and, unless anybody has any last, give me one last chance. I'll go ahead and adjourn that committee at the hall. And we'll reconvene as a council in 25 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.